All right, good evening. We'll call to order the Bristol-Virginia City Council from March the 9th, 2020. Please join me in the middle of the talk.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, thank you everyone who was able to make it out. We only have one item on our agenda, and that is the discussion of the FY 2020-21 budgets by the city managers. I'll turn it over to you.
Please try, we cannot hear a word. Not one word, we're not going to hear a word, and I won't hear.
Hello, hello? Oh, hey, hello. All right, well, all I'm going to say is we'll turn it over to the city manager for our FY 2020-2021 budget, so it's all you.
Counsel, tonight is the first budget workshop of the year. We'll be going over expected revenues for the upcoming fiscal year, plus we'll also be going over department requests. I just want everyone to recognize that these are just some of the first round numbers that we have gone through. This is not the final numbers. We'll continue to develop the budget over the course of the next four weeks prior to my presentation of the budget on April the 7th. First up, we'll talk, the process is we're continuing to work on the budget. Ms. Bradlin and I have already gone through some of the budget and taken out some of the department requests. You will see all of the department requests tonight that have been presented, but we have already made some cuts prior to tonight. We'll talk about my goals for the city, revenue items, the review of the debt, department requests in regards to staffing, department requests in regards to non-staffing items, the benefit review, which includes VRS and health insurance, and a review of the capital plan. The purpose of the workshop is to receive feedback during this budget development process and to communicate where we are at this point in time. The budget remains a working document throughout the process based on historical data, trends, and projections. Format for questions and comments, I'll take questions at any time. If I don't know the answer, I'll tell you I don't know the answer, and we'll get back with you within a very short matter of time after the meeting. Public comments will be received at regularly scheduled meetings at city council meetings. Here's the calendar for the upcoming budget workshops, of course, tonight. Tomorrow night, we had the Bristol-Virginia Public Schools and outside agencies presenting that are non-mandated agencies presenting for their budget requests. March the 28th, which is a Saturday, will be a budget workshop from 9:00 a.m. to noon. On April the 7th is the tax rate resolution and my city manager budget presentation. On April the 28th is the public hearing for the appropriation ordinance. On the May 12th will be the first reading of the budget ordinance, and May 26th will be the second reading and the passage of the budget at this time. My goals for the upcoming year are invest in capital projects, which means we need to evaluate capital projects and set sufficient funding aside to complete necessary capital projects. Number two is self-supporting solid waste disposal fund. I think this has been a goal of mine ever since spring of 18. This includes dealing with the debt service and capital needs of the solid waste disposal fund. We want to continue to have a financially sound budget. I think over the past three budget cycles, we've seen what we can do when we follow the policies that we put in place and make sure that we do not do anything outside of those policies. It's paid off well for us. We need to maintain our city facilities. Not only do we need to maintain those city facilities through the capital funds, but maintain them through early and ongoing maintenance. That's something the city has lacked. They pulled maintenance funds out of the budgets for several years in the past, to the point where there was really minimal maintenance being done to our current facilities. Finally, personnel. We need to continue to invest in employees by giving adequate training and educational opportunities. If we do not train and educate our employees, someone else will be more than willing to do so. And we have to keep the current staff that we have that are working hard to make sure that the city continues to succeed and move in the manner that we have the past several years. So let's talk about revenue growth through our property and local taxes. Total revenue growth is over $1 million. Current taxes on real estate at DRI 2 and 3 is $71,000 increase from the previous year. We're projecting a $225,000 restaurant meals tax increase. We have the beginning balance prior debt savings of $226,526, and we are projecting a $400,000 increase on lodging taxes based on actuals. Revenue loss, we are decreasing our local sales and use tax in the DRI by $135,000. That's phase one. Current taxes on the personal property, phase one, a decrease of $58,000. Business license tax, phase one, a decrease of $50,000. Current taxes on real property in phase one, a decrease of $28,000. Restaurant meals tax in phase one, a decrease of $10,000, and the electric consumption tax, a decrease of $5,000. Other significant local variances, membership and green fees at Clear Creek have decreased by $90,000. The reason for that decrease puts it back in line of where it was in previous years. We had that membership drive last spring and summer where you saw a significant increase in membership and green fees. This just puts it back in line due to the fact that membership fees are not going to be as high due to the not having a membership drive this year. Sell of land and buildings are being decreased by $50,000. Our work release fees are being reduced by $50,000 as well. That's in regards to the judicial alternative sentencing program. Interest on bank deposits will be decreased by $75,000. Increase, oh yeah, there's no parentheses, increased by $75,000. Emergency medical service fees will be increased by $75,000 as well, and our cart rental fees at the golf course will be increased by $130,000. And that's due to the fact that the number of new members that we have thanks to that membership drive at the golf course. Here's a graph from 2000 that shows our sales in lodging and mills taxes over time. You can see the lodging taxes in orange at the bottom. It is progressively increased, and you can even look through 2007, '08, '09, and '10 during the recession years. It basically was flat during those period. '11 took a little bit of a dip, and it started rebounding in '12. Your local sales tax is the blue line. Over the course of time, that has kind of, it's been up and down. You can see a dip occur in 2008, '09, and '10. It was kind of bottomed out probably around $3.6, $3.7 million. Increased again in 2012, decreased '13, '14, and '15, with an increase in '16, a decrease again in '17, and now we're on the upswing. If you follow that line that has been going on, it could mean that we might be in for another downturn in local sales and use tax. And then finally, our mills tax over time, you can see, has dramatically increased since 2000. In 2007, you can see the mills tax was right below $5 million. It decreased, I think the largest decrease we saw was $400,000 in '09 from '07 if I'm not mistaken, and then it continually increased over the past several years, and we've had some, a few downturns here and there, but nothing significant when you look at the dollar amount overall. Here's our debt citywide. This includes the solid waste disposal fund. I'll just move everything on out to the far right-hand side under the incremental change. You can see in 2023, fiscal year 2023, we would need to find $2,420 in order to fund the debt that is needed. And then in fiscal year '24 is the big hit of $903,000, basically. In fiscal year '25, it increases to $919,000. Fiscal year '26, $933,000. And then fiscal year '27, $934,000. But really, what you see there is roughly a $34,000 increase of additional funds needed to service that debt between '24 and '27. The general fund, you can see in 2023, out of the general fund, $558,000 will be needed. In fiscal year '24, you would need an additional $8,500. And then in fiscal year '25, we will actually be $426,000 to the good, and then in '26, we'd be $58,000 to the good, and in '27, it levels off again. Solid waste disposal fund, in '23, we have a substantial hit of $477,000. In '24, we will have some excess funds. Again, in '25, you have $483,000 is needed to fund the debt. '26, $439,000. And then in '27, we'll be back to the good because some of that debt does drop off in Department request includes 19 full-time employees. These are just the requests, a total of $1.26 million. Human resources has requested an additional employee. The treasurer has increased, wants to increase her part-time employee by five hours a week. Police have requested a major position, and also some supplement additions in regards to some employees there that need some salary adjustments. Fire department has requested an ALS stipend increase of $57,000. What you have seen, local communities or local fire departments and EMS services are providing certain levels of EMTs and paramedics stipends based on the certifications that they hold, and this would put the fire department in line with some of those other fire departments and EMS service providers. Because currently, right now, anyone with the fire department receives is a flat $2,000 stipend regardless of what the certification is. The fire department's also requested seven new positions. Streets department has requested three full-time laborers, and they've also added a GIS technician. The fleet department is requesting one new position. Building maintenance is asking for an additional electrician assistant. Building maintenance is also asking for two custodians. And then park and rec operations is asking for two park technicians. I can tell you, based on things that I see and comments that I hear, people do enjoy having clean parks, and with current staffing levels, sometimes they just cannot get to everything that, especially after a big weekend or during a big weekend, they cannot get to the, give it to the level of service that's probably needed when you have 200 or 300 people coming in for a softball tournament or a soccer tournament or something of that nature. Non-employee-related matters, this is public safety. The police department's requesting an additional part-time person in dispatch for, it'd be a contract labor position. That would be roughly $25,000 a year. The police department's also requesting additional funding for clothing and personal supplies of $12,000. The fire department's requesting $29,000 for education and training to attend additional educational seminars. A lot of those educational seminars have to do with active shooter scenarios and some other equipment for $35,996. The sheriff's department is requesting $29,416 for professional services, an additional $500,000 for inmate housing, and maintenance of machinery and equipment, $10,000. This is public works and streets. They are requesting an increase of $12,000 in operating supplies and materials, $33,000 in professional services. That is mainly for engineering and structural engineering services in order to help us with gauging the needs of our certain facilities and estimates for potential roofs and things of that nature. Maintenance of building and property, $16,500. Other improvements of $45,000, and maintenance of property, $160,000. The vast majority of that $160,000 is paving at the WCYB parking lot and the animal shelter. Other departments, professional services under city attorney of $206,000. IT, public safety software of $19,378. Devault Stadium, that is a study to determine the structural soundness of the stadium there now. Clear Creek Golf Course, contract labor, that would be to add an additional helper throughout the summer months. Lease of equipment, $19,000 increase, and then economic development, an increase in incentives of $70,000, and that's just due to the fact of we have additional hotels coming online. Bristol Hotel has been online now, and we kind of have a real read as to what their incentive needs will be as well. Health Department, an increase of $33,000. Social Services, an increase of $223,000. Higher education of $28,544. The Appalachian Joint Commission, $18,268. School funding, an additional $300,000. Chamber of Commerce is requesting the Discover Bristol, an additional $50,000. Believe in Bristol is requesting an additional $30,000 from current funding, and the Bristol Country Music Association is asking for $120,000 as well, for a total of $803,000. Employee benefits, our VRS retirement rate increased by approximately two percentage points this year citywide. That affects our budget by $210,600. However, on the good side, our health insurance premiums decreased significantly, I think by about 4.5% for a total of $132,000. So you see just a small change in employee benefit changes of $78,200. Capital plan, local capital plan, you can see over the next several years, we will ask to continue to increase that based on budgetary needs. In fiscal year '21, we'd be asking for $672,000. Vehicles of $313,000 for a total of $985,000. That's 1.83% of the general fund, and it's roughly a $360,000 increase from last fiscal year's capital plan budget, and it will continue to increase all the way up through '20, '25 when it levels off at that point at 3% of our general fund. So this year's local funds for capital projects are Lee Highway Exit 5 Phase 1B, $39,874. The sheriff is requesting $160,000 for jail plumbing issues. The Bonham Road shared use path is $13,210, and I believe the rest of that is funded through VDOT maintenance funds. The police are asking for an audio recorder. I have the details on that here. I'll have to find that in a second, but it has something to do with 911 dispatch. Drainage improvements throughout the city of $45,000. Fire department is requesting $30,000 for additional gear for the firefighters so that they can have two sets of gear, and then an HVAC system for the jail of $354,000 for a total of $672,415. So what's next? If you have questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those tonight. If I don't know the answer, I'll get back to you, and our next workshop will be on March the 28th of 2020.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open it up for questions.
Yeah, I got a couple, Randy. On the revenue side, you know, we're sitting here at January 56, 580, basically, right? 59% into it, 58% into the year. So what are you, what are you thinking with the ups and downs there? I was trying to get my mind around the total movement on the top line.
Hold on a second. Well, I think when you see my, the biggest increases you're going to see are restaurant meals taxes and lodging taxes. We did go back, we analyzed what happened through the recession in '08, '09, and '10. We did not see a significant change in any of those local taxes. We did not analyze the real estate property taxes because for the most part, those get paid. People do not want the home seized. And then based on different assessment situations and tax rates, it wouldn't have been comparing apples to apples. So I think what you have to look at at that time is really the collection rate in '08, '09, and '10 to determine how the real estate taxes would be affected. These, these numbers here are actually based on actuals and what we're seeing and the trends that we're seeing. Last year, we probably budgeted a little bit less. We're overperforming on some of those tax rates at this point. So we, we had a real tough decision to make. How do we, knowing everything that's going on in the economy, we've got an election year, now we have the coronavirus, how do we really try to nail down how this is going to affect us? And based on what we're seeing, we feel like these numbers here are, should, we should be okay with these numbers. And the $400,000 increase on the lodging tax is based simply where we did not budget what we're receiving year-to-date.
So what do you think your end-of-year number looks like then?
As far as?
You know, what we would budget for as a total number, 56 million and a half, 57 million?
I'd be afraid to give you that number right now. As I said, we're still going through these numbers and trying to pare things down.
Because we kind of have to get our arms around that, right?
Right.
Roughly. So, so if you take the 32.9 that we're sitting here year-to-date, right, and you project that out to the end of the fiscal year, if everything stays the same, you know, it would be right, be slightly over 56 million, 56.5.
Right.
Right? So my question is, do you think that's what you're going to roughly settle on, what we end the year with or close to it? Or are we going to pull back a little bit, okay, based on economic issues? Are we going to, where are we going to end up? More conservative about the same?
As I said, we've still got a month to go. We still want to continue to watch the revenues as they come in, and we'll be making adjustments to these numbers up through April 6th or maybe even through noon on April 7th prior to the budget presentation. It's, you know, what we could potentially see is all of a sudden lodging taxes take a huge dip that throws off what we're projecting. We'll know, let's see, now we're in March, so we'll know January's numbers shortly for lodging and restaurant meals taxes. So that will kind of give us a better idea of where January is as compared to last January, and then as we move into early April, we'll be able to see where we are in February as well. So I don't want to sit here and commit to what that number will be.
Well, we got to kind of talk through it a little bit, right? We got to, that's what this workshop's about. So are we thinking that with the economic things that are happening now, we're going to assume the economic tax rate inflows will be about the same, or just going to kind of hold it where we're seeing? Are we going to try to pull it down a little bit because of the uncertainty in the market? Or what are we thinking?
Well, I think what you want me to tell you is we're going to pull it back. And what I'm saying is, you know, at this time, I don't want to make a commitment as to what we're going to do. We have always budgeted conservatively here, and we always try to look at actuals. I think what we've, the city has done in the past, they probably were not near as conservative as they needed to be when it came to budgeting and revenue numbers, and I would rather be safe than sorry. I recognize we have the coronavirus outbreak. I recognize it's an election year today that Al Jones had the worst day since 2008. So there are things going on in the market. Is it going to have an eventual impact on local spending? I think that's something yet to be determined. I would, me, I would err on the side of caution, but to tell you what that number is tonight, I'd be afraid to do that tonight.
So of course, you know, that's my frustration, this whole budgeting process, right? You've got to kind of settle on a revenue number before you can start talking about the cost side.
Well, we do that.
You don't really, so when do you think we'd have a, we could settle on a discussion of, we're going to, we're going to conservatively think 56 million, that's our number, or 55.5, or 56.2, or whatever the total is?
Well, if you look at the budget calendar here, what you have coming up are outside agency presentations, and then we have the solid waste disposal workshop on March the 28th, and then on April the 7th is when I present my budget, where we can actually begin in-depth discussions of what everyone thinks. And I know the workshops are part of that, and that's why we do have these workshops, but this is where we can begin those in-depth discussions as to whether you all believe the revenue projections that I present are within line with what you all think.
Correct me if I'm wrong, procedurally, we could make changes basically up until the first reading. After that, we can't change.
You can't do any major significant changes after the first reading?
So that's first of March now, so it's April, that's 60 days, so we can kind of get a sense if things out there take a turn for the worse, then we can see that, or if we can see things look like they're holding. So, so there's still some time. And even then, that, that puts us, if we wanted to, we can push all of that back 30 days.
We've still got an additional 30 days, right. So we can. So we've got plenty of time to adjust, and this may be one of those years as we see things move, especially with the coronavirus, if all of a sudden businesses stop travel and people stop travel, then we probably need to look at that lodging tax number again because that's going to have an impact. And hopefully, based on teleconferences I've been on with the Department of Health, meetings I've been in with Ballot Health, hopefully by mid-April to mid-May, we'll see where this coronavirus thing is going to be. Is it, is it still going to continue to increase, or are we going to be leveled off at some point where everyone feels more comfortable saying, okay, we've made it through the worst part, and things should resume to normal, you know, in the summer? I think it's too early to make any assumptions on the coronavirus. I mean, we left, I left here on Friday afternoon. I think there were 253 cases at 5:15 on Friday afternoon, and of course, this morning, we had, I think, 545, and then by this evening, there's 607 confirmed cases in the United States. Things are changing rapidly.
So what do you want us to get out of this previous slide, just from the fact that you, it looks like we're about a million up or whatever? Is that what you want us to get out of it?
Yeah, I mean, what I want you to see, whoops, wrong one. What I want everyone to start seeing and start thinking about, these are the trends that we're seeing that we feel comfortable saying, these local taxes are trending upward. Whoops, wrong way again. The ones in parentheses are trending downward, and these are based on actual numbers that we feel comfortable by decreasing the DRI by those numbers, that will probably be pretty much on point for next fiscal year based on those numbers. And then you can continue to see decreases in certain things that we know are going to happen, and then increase in the interest on bank deposits, increase on EMS services, and increase on cart rental fees. And those are, those are things that we're actually seeing that I can sit here today.
And what's the net-net of all that? What's your, is it about a million one? Is that what the net-net is of all that stuff added up? The ups and downs?
You're probably about one and a half, I'd say, close to it, maybe.
One and a half up?
No. We're, we're down, when you put everything together right now as it stands, we're one and a half short, roughly, between revenue and expenses.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the revenue side. Forget expenses.
Okay.
Is the, is the net up in revenue plus all the net downs? When you add them all up, the net-net, are we, are we up about a million from what we budgeted? That's what we think we're going to come in at? Or are we, that's, that's what I'm trying to get my mind around?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. Do you know?
Prelimarily, we are not anywhere close to being done. Prelimarily, Mr. Eads, that's about 54.6 million, which is up from the original budget of fiscal year '20, the original budget, about 700,000. Once again, that is very preliminary, preliminary, but that's where we are right now.
Yeah, and I was just used to seeing, you know, if you add them all up to bottom, that's a, that would say it's roughly 700,000 up there.
And I think his slide is focusing on significant, not, not $1,000 here or $1,000 there. I think what Mr. Eads was doing in his presentation was highlighting what are the significant variances from last year.
So go back to the ups again, the slide with the ups. There you go. So on the first item there, the DRI 2 and 3, the current taxes, real property.
Right.
Anything suspecting to be changed there much? One new property is going in up, up there in that section?
We did not include any new, any potential for new properties. The only thing we've included in this are things that actually have brick and mortar there now.
Current brick and mortar, even though one, one's empty, still has the obligation of that line item.
That's right.
I mean, everybody, so you, you're not expecting that line item to probably change much? Maybe it goes up a little bit?
Right, maybe.
The restaurant meal?
That's based on what we're actually seeing as it's coming in. Last year, we probably budgeted a little low on the revenue side for restaurant meal taxes, and this is just truly, you take what we had through December of '19, and you double that based on the revenue and that we're seeing, and it would be an increase of about $225,000 based on actuals.
So you don't expect that to be lower than that? You expect that to be pretty close? There's no, based on the folks that have left, some of the restaurants, folks that have come in, you know, there's been Outback left, Mexican Restaurant Inn, you know, ins and outs. You don't expect the meal tax to change much?
No, I don't. Outback left two fiscal years ago, I believe, so that's. So, that's already come and gone. The New Mexican Restaurant came online, I think, last spring. So, the, I mean, these are numbers that we're actually seeing.
Yeah, no, I'm talking past actuals. I'm saying, what would we think that 225 would look like based on ins and outs? People that have left here recently, maybe coming in recently? Is that going to be the same about the same?
What I'm saying is, the restaurant meals tax is $3.8 million. If that's what we budgeted last year, I'm projecting a 4.025 million revenue.
About the same?
Right.
Okay. Now, is that prior debt savings? That include what we talked about with Davenport, or is that?
No, this is stuff that's already accounted for. We haven't included anything that we've done, that we've contemplated doing with Davenport in this budget.
So, would that have some upside?
It would have an upside, but we're not considering that number at this point.
When, when would we, when would Davenport have all their stuff for us to come back and consider there?
I think they, I said, first of April?
They're in the process of development and finalizing the RFP, and that is, is...
I think it's the first of April, mid-April, I think is what they're projecting.
So, we'll know what that is before we settle on a final.
Right.
But even though I don't, from the looks of that one slide you had about debt, I don't know that it impacts next year's budget as much as out-years.
Yeah, I think it'd have a greater impact further down the road.
Yeah.
And you expect the lodging to be about that? You don't see any big ups or downs from that?
I mean, based on what we're seeing, based on the trends over the past three to four years, you know, it's been a steady increase for the past three or four years. And I can't remember the budget number we had for lodging taxes this past year. It may have been about 1.4, but we're, we're trending towards a $1.8 million line item this year.
And what did those graphs show back, the graphs you were showing, the previous years?
So, lodging ran flat after '08?
Yeah, it was flat. You can see from '08, '09, '10, slight decrease in '11, then a uptick in '12, and then it's kind of steadily increased ever since.
Does that $400,000 projected increase, does that factor in any with the, the only other thing I know that's coming on board is the new Sessions Hotel in downtown?
We have not considered any of the Sessions Hotel in these revenue projections.
Okay.
So, what's, what's the explanation of the meal stacks having a natural uptrend like that over, looks like about 10 years?
Well, you know, the only thing that I can relate that to is the fact, we've probably had more restaurants come online in the city since then.
I was going to say, the rate changed, was it six, 2006, 2007?
Okay.
Something like that, I'm thinking.
What did it change from, what to what?
Meal taxes at seven now, it was at five, I think.
It was at five in '06?
Yeah, it would have been, I'm thinking, for sure.
So, it went from five to?
Seven.
So, it went up?
Forty percent.
So, that would explain, that steep curve.
Right.
Lodging tax didn't change like that, though, right?
Yes, it did.
It did too? When did it change?
At the same time.
You can see the dips there.
So, right here?
Right.
And I think it changed from seven to nine, I believe.
And how much did it go up?
Two percent.
About two percent, from seven to nine.
So, we probably ought to take the time and put that kind of stuff on the graph, so we kind of know those points in time. Those are kind of important to remember, right, of what's driving the curve, if you want to set a conservative rate, right? You want to understand why it's going up, but that would explain it if, you know, and then you say, well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't expect it to continue doing that, because we're not going to go up on a rate like that again. So, we would have to project it just based on activity, right? Economic activity.
So, I had a question getting into the, when you were talking about the requests from departments for personnel. So, on the police, the only actual, it's like the only actual personnel they're requesting is another major, is that right?
That's correct.
So, I know we had had that meeting a couple of weeks ago, talking about downtown and staffing for downtown to address some of the transient issues.
Homeless issues, right.
Yeah. So, are they taking any kind of steps to address that? Because I would think if we were prioritizing positions, adding positions, I would think that we'd be prioritizing a patrol person for addressing that.
Well, they're doing everything that they can with the manpower that they currently have to address the homelessness issues downtown. We do have an officer that's dedicated downtown, but if there's an officer out on a shift, he will typically try to cover that person's shift, so you have all sectors of the city covered, which then leaves you without an officer downtown. You know, if, in a perfect world, if we had an unlimited budget, and you all didn't care to spend, then I would say we probably need to add an additional 10 officers. But we're not there. And I think that would really address a lot of needs and concerns that we have. Our Economic Development Director's been meeting with all the businesses in the city, and he has a survey that some have completed, others just kind of, they don't complete it, but they tell them their concerns. And several of our larger businesses say police presence is an issue, that we just do not have enough police officers to deal with some of the issues that they're seeing.
Well, the department heads gave you this list. Did they give you justification for each one of those items?
Yes.
Can, can we see that? Can you add that, or some kind of a column or something to the?
I can get that to you.
So, I guess to the mayor's point, if you added the major position, is that somehow free up an additional patrol? Or is that?
It would not.
Okay.
So, what, what does this new major do?
Well, the new major would be basically in charge of operations of the Police Department, is what the new major would be. Overseen patrol, CID, and making sure that everyone is doing what they're supposed to do. They help with internal affairs, investigations. It's, it's an administrative position.
Is that major position directly below the chief?
That's correct.
Did we used to have that years ago, and it was eliminated?
Up through fiscal year '17, we had a major.
And then, million-two-six-six is the total column added up, right? That's salary plus benefits?
Yes. I mean, and, you know, if we, if we want to, I mean, the additional employee for HR, I'm just going off the top of my head, it's based simply on the fact that, you know, there's things that need to be accomplished in HR that two people just can't accomplish. It's, I think things, in my opinion, may run smoother with an additional person. That's something that, it's something I think we would need, honestly, in order to do exactly what an HR department should do for a city this size.
Since the treasurer, that, that part-time position, is any of, is that all local funding? Is there any comp board funding to that?
The part-time position is 100% city-funded. It originally was requested in 2010, when I took on the overwhelming task of the delinquencies. I was given a part-time position. Every year since then, I have asked for the funding of 15 additional hours to make that part-time position of 25 hours of full-time. So, this year, I have decided to back off and just ask for five more hours, making that position a 30-hour position.
And so, that would be to do additional DMV stops, or things like that?
To help out with all the delinquent collections, answering phone calls. The Commissioner and I are working together on a new push to bring in some additional revenue for the city.
So, is this list your recommendation, and you vetted all this? You, you're going to present this list here as the, as the salary adds?
I have not presented my budget yet. These are department requests.
Okay, so you haven't endorsed this yet?
I haven't endorsed.
You have not endorsed this yet?
I have not, no.
Okay.
Supplemental additions for the police, those are specific salaries I'd rather discuss in private, in closed session. Fire Department, ALS stipends, something I previously discussed earlier tonight in regards to what other departments are offering, paramedics and EMTs, and then, seven new positions. That's based on what their needs are with the current staffing situation. Based on a formula that I've seen, it appears if you had seven new positions, it would take care of the issues with overtime. You know, that's in theory. Streets, three full-time employees, laborers. You know, what we have now, we have a lot more streets that we have to maintain with mulch and trees, and making sure those things are mowed and upkept. We have a, we have a lot for those folks to do, and to stay, it would keep them busy. GIS technician, that's just simply based on the addition of some of the next-gen, I forget what they call it, next-gen something, yeah, next-gen 911. This, this technician would work really for public safety, to ensure that all of our Southern software and our mapping software stays up to date and is appropriately working all the time. Fleet maintenance, a new position, and that's just based on the fact, we have a lot of old vehicles in this city. There's six individuals out there now, and they stay covered up. Building maintenance is electrician assistant. That's simply because we need, that's one thing the city does not have, is a depth chart when it comes to certain key critical positions. And we don't have a depth chart with an electrician. We have Gene right now, he's our only certified electrician on staff. We do have another electrician that will be certified, hopefully, here shortly, I think sometime this summer. And then, this would allow another person to eventually become certified as well. Building maintenance, two custodians. I can tell you, with one of these, and I can tell you right now, if, if we can make it work financially, I don't know. I would suggest one additional custodian for the courthouse, to be at the courthouse probably between the hours of nine and six. There are a lot of people in and out of that courthouse on a daily basis. Bathrooms need tending to, trash cans need tending to. You want to keep your courthouse clean. And that would be probably one of the main ones that I would consider on this, is to have someone there during the day. The problem that we've ran into, I think anyone that works in that court office, these two included, in conversations that we've had, sometimes they don't like having cleaning staff there during the middle of the day. It interrupts their workflow. But we're at a point where there are certain things that have to be done during the day in order to keep the courthouse clean and keep citizens happy. That's probably one of my biggest complaint areas. And I try to work with the courthouse staff to make sure it gets cleaned on their schedule, but at times, and I think they do do a good job cleaning at night, it's really in the day where you see a lot of the problems, because people aren't there cleaning restrooms and picking up trash that people leave behind in the courtrooms and things like that. And park technicians, as I said before, it, people like to have a nice, clean park.
Mr. Eads, can I, I'm sorry, can I just interject? On the police, the supplement additions, those, that was, that request was to add $21,2000 supplements for the...
Oh, that's right, that's the SWAT. That's what that was for.
For the SWAT, K-9, and EOD officers?
Yes, that's right. That's stipends, I'm sorry about that. That is stipends for SWAT team, K-9 officer, and what was the other one? Yeah, explosive ordinance.
Can you add three little small columns to this? Like, in between department and description, put current head count and total for that department, like HR's got two currently. They're asking for a one-up add, and then a percent increase, so it's a 50% increase, right? Two to, two to three? And show that for all the departments.
I've got a question about, we maybe talked a little bit about this, how the Sheriff's Department works with, with trustees going out and, you know, doing the things they do, like mowing and stuff like that, picking up trash. Specifically about, well, the park techs, the custodians, and the streets, the three laborers there, so I think that's like seven positions. How, how does that work as far as, and again, I don't know the exact numbers, but if, you know, is it possible if, and I know there has to be a certain number of folks down at the jail, but if there's, you know, two extra people there that are just focused on the trustees and working on some of those things that those positions would take care of, is there a way there could be some savings, not having to add those many full-time employees to the city?
I can't speak for the sheriff, but I think if he was standing right here, I think he would tell you, you have such a turnover rate within his department right now, it would be very difficult to say. One, he would have to get to where he should be, which is, I think, about 57 officers, is that right? Fifty, 57 total? He would have to get up to 57 and stay there. And then, he would need to know that if he had two or three additional others, which would take him up to 59 or 60, that those would then be dedicated to trustees. Like, right now, I have a situation where I need to get a building cleaned out so someone can look at it. And unfortunately, the person who's in charge of watching trustees is unavailable until Monday. So, you know, the potential buyer's going to have to wait till next week. It's probably take two days to clean out this building that we want to sell, it's been on the market forever. We just don't want them going in and looking at it the way that it is right now. Homeless people get into it, we board it up, they break back into it. And, so, in a perfect world, I think you could do a lot with it, with the trustees. But right now, with the flux of the Sheriff's Department and the fact that he's not fully staffed, I don't think you can sit here and count on trustees to do a lot of this work on a regular basis.
I always like looking at trends, it's hard to look at numbers, you know, in isolation when we get to the budget. And we didn't really do this last year, but I like those graphs you did with the, you know, you see that historical run rate. Can we do something like that on the revenue and the expense side? You don't have to go down to every account, but just the, like, the whole department or the whole revenue line, just show last three years, what the current budget is and what the percent change, you know, is?
I think the current budget book shows that, if I'm not mistaken, if you look into detail.
I've always had to run the numbers, so it's never been there. You always have to pull your calculator out and start punching numbers, right, to get to that number.
All right.
It's just a way of saying, okay, are we, are we up, down, or equal to the last three-year run rate? So, if you look at the last three years, and the average of the last three years, how, are you even? Are you up, are you down, to gauge what are, whatever a trajectory looks like, right, on, on the big items, revenue and all the department expenses?
Sure.
Roll the total, please, total, you know, not each individual item.
A few things in the non-personnel, if you want to. Go ahead. Okay, right there. Why is the dispatch contract labor and not employee?
That person would be working part-time, and they're already a certified dispatch officer. That way, they would not have to go through training, and they would just be working part-time, and we would not have to pay this person benefits.
And professional services for the sheriff?
Yes, that's the IT, that's for IT services. Is, is that not the IT one?
Wait just one second, I'm sorry. That is the Highlands Community Service position?
That's right, yep. That, go ahead with that one.
That is for the discharge planner?
Yes.
And, and services that?
And I think there's an offset to that as well. Is there not an offset on that one?
Right now, it's been, being paid for from vacancy savings.
Right.
Okay. So, that $500,000 for the sheriff is above and beyond what they got this year?
That's correct.
And what, was it 700?
700.
So, we'd go to 1.2?
Correct.
Keep going, I'll find, no. Yeah, the stadium, is that to look at the rest, like, the third base seats? Because I know where you, you said something about looking at the seating and stuff out there.
And actually, I think I got confused. The vault stadium is, that's, is actually...
Or is that the football field?
No, the football field is another line item that we have under, I can't remember which department, but it's under another line item. It's a study for that, I think it's roughly 30,000. This is to actually, the folding seats that are there behind home plate and kind of surround home a little bit, what's going to happen, they're sitting on wood right now, and a lot of, that wood is probably 15, 20 years old, some of it. We're actually going to pull that out, pour concrete, and then bolt those seats to concrete.
So, that's not a study, that's...
No, that's not. I misspoke on that.
That's, I was just wondering what you were studying that.
Now, we are studying the football field. Now, we are studying the football field. You have, the backside of home side is nothing but concrete block. And we have noticed what I would consider maybe some deficiencies that are similar to what we've seen at the baseball stadium this past year. So we do want to have a structural engineer look at that.
Just swap home and business, let the home people sit on the other side, let the business sit on that side. Do you like that joke?
Keep going, that's one other. Yeah, right there. So all of those, except for the bottom three...
Are mandated.
Are mandated, well, or the schools, every, the top four. So is that the way the formulas shake out? Would that be the increase above last year? For example, with the health department, I know it's formula-based and all of those. Is that an increase above whatever last year?
Yes, whatever above last year, that's correct. Social services, we have some play with that, but the problem is when you start playing with that number, they don't get the state and federal funding matches. So...
And the same with higher education, because if, that's the community college. I know in years past, they have a request that's based on the funding formula, plus they also add in an additional like Capitol or some kind of other request above and beyond that.
The request this year was, I think, that 28,000, and I think they had an additional request for 31,000 for economic development purposes, I think is what they call it.
But the 28 is above...
Oh, 28's the economic development piece, I'm sorry.
So, but the 28's above what we funded?
Yes.
Okay.
So what was BCM last year?
5,000.
And that's what they're asking for?
That's correct. They're asking for a total of 125. Because we funded them 5,000, they're asking for an additional 120.
And so those bottom four agencies, that's tomorrow night?
That's correct. Except the, Discover will be on Friday.
Yeah.
And what's the school funding increase for?
That would get them back level with what they were in 2000 fiscal year 18.
Mr. Aids, 86,000 of that $300,000.
It's already been given, so...
So this is increase over last year's original. So 86,000 of that council...
It's really a $214,000 increase.
And then the only other thing, and I think I mentioned this before, is if my understanding's correct, and a business does go into the Lowe's building, that would reduce, or it would put something in that line item you have for revenue sharing?
That's correct, yes.
I have no idea what that would be, but you might want to talk to the county and see what they think it'd be. Because they, they will have to, or they won't have to give us money, but it would reduce the amount.
It would reduce what we have to give them.
Back on the police thing again, because I seem to be hung up on that. So I remember a couple of months ago, we had people coming from, living in Kingtown who were talking about, we needed to apply for the COPS grant to increase. Was there any discussion of...
We were in the process of applying for the COPS grant. The deadline is on March the 11th, which is Wednesday. And the parameters of the grant, we do not feel like we would qualify, but we're going to apply anyway. One, you have to be considered either, one you don't have, one you, one you qualify the grant if you do not have school resource officers. Well, we have school resource officers. Another way to qualify for it is if you're considered a violent crime area. We're not considered a violent crime area. We are going to apply for it, just to see what will happen. And if, if we do, if we do get that grant, I think that's four or five positions that we would fund initially. 25% of their salary first year, 50% the second year, 75% the third year, 100% the fourth year. Then I think we have to keep in them additional a year after that.
I do think it'd be beneficial, you know, maybe, maybe if we can't do it this year, if we're, if we're getting this casino, we need to start planning ahead and ramping up and having some additional staffing, which I'm sure you know and...
Well, it's something I've, you know, I've said probably privately, I don't know if I've said it publicly, but it would be nice over the next two to three years to add in the two or three additional positions, at least in police, to deal with the, over the next two or three years for maybe a total of six to eight officers, to deal with the increase in people that will be coming to town here shortly, assuming the referendum passes.
Well, I see. So you don't, you don't staff up before the referendum passes. I'm hoping we're not, that's not what we're saying.
No, I mean, I mean, what I said is, you got to be prepared for it when it happens if the referendum passes, and we need to start ramping up for it.
Yeah, because it'll take them construction time. It's not like they're going to operate, you know, within a few months.
No, I mean, I mean, yeah, I agree with you. I'd argue that the police are a little bit short-staffed. Apparently, they don't seem to think they are, so maybe they aren't. But yeah, we need to definitely have a plan for, assuming it does pass when it opens.
I have a problem with the plan.
Yeah. So the premiums on health insurance dropped 4%, you said?
Yeah, roughly four and a half, I think.
Why? What happened?
Well, I mean, you have to look, there's a whole formula that's based on, it's based on the premiums that come in, it's based on the cost expended, and based on what our cost, the cost insurance company was less than projected, so it's just a decrease. And they try to keep it within actual, so that's the reason for the decrease. Now, it doesn't mean that next year, it won't increase 8%. It just, this year, we were lucky. Last year was flat, this year it decreased.
At what point, because it seems to me in the past, there's a point we have to set that so that, for the open enrollment, that we have to let people, I mean, if their portion's going to increase or decrease or whatever, we have to let the employees know. It seems like it's before we actually adopt the budget. I forget where, but there, you...
Yes, and we normally do that before the presentation of the budget, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, because it has something, I know it has something to do with the, they have to know for the open enrollment, and it's usually a little bit ahead of...
Yeah, because open enrollment's usually mid-April, late April, somewhere in there.
Yeah, so. Can you add that at some point in, you know, in all the budget stuff?
Sure.
Just so we'll remember.
I can't remember when we did it last year, but we went over, it seemed like it was late March last year.
And show total FTE count over the last three years and where we are, where we're going to, so we can kind of see where we've been.
I think in spring of 18, I provided the 10-year analysis of FTEs. It was a chart.
It's 300-something, right?
It's, the FTE count is in our budget book. I mean, it will be in the budget book, in the adminis, it, it was in there last year. It will be this coming year. That FTE counts there.
And then we did a whole chart for the previous 10 years of every department. I actually have that saved on my desktop.
Do we have a rough estimate of what overtime is running at? I know we mentioned overtime for the fire department earlier. Do we know if we're, if we have some overtime for the police department and...
They're budgeted at $70,000, and they're probably, they're not over the 70,000 at this point, but if they continue to trend the way they are, they'll be maybe 70, maybe a little bit over. They're usually pretty good about staying within their budget of the amount.
Is that fire or police?
That's police.
Police, okay.
Right.
A certain portion of that's grant-funded, right?
Some of it is grant-funded.
That for, like, holiday weekends and stuff like that, for them to have extra patrol?
I will go ahead and tell you that you will see an increase in overtime this year under special events for police and fire, $15,000. That's just due to the Tri-Pride event, and that'll be 15,000 for each department. All hands will be on deck the weekend of August 28th, 29th, for that weekend.
Will there be any increase because of the timing of the festival and the race, that they're back-to-back?
No, everything should work out fine. We, I made everyone go back, analyze what their needs would be for that weekend. The Tri-Pride event's basically a one-day event. It starts on Saturday morning. We'll have staff coming in, extra staff coming in about 6:00 that morning, probably be cleared out by 11:00 PM, based on the number of staff here, based on the fact that we'll have every alphabet agency of the federal government here that weekend. We have to, we have to staff up for that weekend.
So on the firefighters, what were the, or the justifications for seven new positions?
Basically, when you do an analysis of overtime, and if you had seven positions, yeah, I think seven positions puts them at 15 people per shift, which then, based on current leave, it would, and when people need to take leave, it would reduce the amount of overtime. I won't say to nothing, but it reduces it significantly. I think down to about the $40,000 a year range.
What was their overtime budget this year? What do they run at?
120,000.
What are they going to be here at? About 160, 120?
Probably, yeah, pull it up, but they'll be over the 120.
So 370 is a lot more than overtime though, right?
The, the what?
So the 370 add is more than just to get rid of overtime?
Yes.
So is part of it related to the ambulance service?
Some of it is related to the ambulance service, because what you've done now, instead of having three firefighters at every station, you've got typically five at station one, two at station three, and either two or three at station two, depending on staffing needs.
Budget for the current fiscal year, 70,000, and as of today, $69,566 have been spent. Fire department has done a good job of when overtime is allowed to be paid by grant, they move that out. So that, there may be some in there that needs to be moved out. But as of today, they're right at, right at 100%.
I was saying they were more. That's my fault.
So they're, they're basically hitting it today, pretty much. So we've got what?
We've still got three months left, four months left in the fiscal year, though.
So which one of those are not headcount increases, like the stipend increase, that's not headcount?
No, it's not a headcount.
Supplemental additions, is that a headcount or no?
That's not.
So what, what does that mean again, supplemental additions?
Supplemental additions is basically give a salary supplement to SWAT team, EOD, and K-9 officer of $2,000. And then the ALS stipend, depending on what, what their certification is, whether it's a paramedic or an EMT advanced or an EMT intermediate, I can't remember the exact certifications. It would be to give those people a stipend to compensate them for their certifications.
And then tomorrow, we're hearing from the outside agencies and from the school?
That's correct.
So the school's going to ask for the 300, or you say it's 214?
They'll ask for the 300, but that's simply because the 86 has already been given to them this fiscal year. That was the addition of the two maintenance people. It's a $300,000 increase from the original budget last year, but it nets at 214 based to the, on the additional 86 that was given this past fiscal year.
Do we have any more questions for, for tonight? I will say thank you for, for presenting this to us. And if there are no further questions or discussions...
I just want to remind everybody, this is not my budget. These are just department requests. So don't go out here thinking that you're going to have 19 full-time employees and whatever else I presented tonight, because we still have a long ways to go.
We won't hold you accountable for this.
Somebody will.
All right, if there's nothing else, we will stand adjourned.